Ready? Good morning. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the August 8, 2024, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the Chair this year. Joining me today is Commissioner Aaron Mays. Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioner Bill Rippon. Good morning.
Good morning.
Our county councillor, Mr Eckert.
Good morning.
And Ms Otto filling in for Ms Speck. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, let's go ahead and get started. What's our first item?
Item three, Consent Agenda.
There's a number of items on the Consent Agenda. Are there any questions or is there a motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Rippon, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item four, New Business. A, County Clerk, number one, consider all voucher payments.
This morning we had vouchers totaling $4,219,171.25. In the voucher report, there's not much to report today, and so I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Passes three to zero. Our next item.
Number two, Consider Correction Orders.
I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item B, Public Works. Number one, conduct public hearing pursuant to KSA 19-216D for request to issue a request for qualifications for design-build services relating to the assessment and upgrade of the Sherwood Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. If approved, the award of a design-build contract will conform to the three-phase process of KSA 19-216F. This is the final project of a $7 million KDHE loan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Courtney, House Director of Public Works. A few weeks ago, when I was up here talking about this desire to use design-build for the treatment plant upgrade and reconstruction, it's mostly an upgrade. This is out at the Sherwood Treatment Plant. I talked about the benefits of design-build. And really, I think we can save money using design-build, although time isn't really critical. I think we can shorten the timeline to project delivery. But most important, I think this, when you work in an existing facility and you're trying to install new equipment, new processes within an existing facility, that's where I think design-build really shines, because you have a designer and a contractor working together to solve problems. It's not like you have a set of design plans, you let a project, and lo and behold, you got a contractor and things aren't what you thought they were. So with that, I believe design-build is the way to go. And with that, I think we need to have a public hearing in order to conform to the KSA.
Any questions for Mr Nehaus? Okay. Then pursuant to the statute, I'm going to make a motion that we open a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Passes three to zero. We are now in a public hearing. And Kurt, this public hearing is for you to make the request. Again, as you said, you're wanting to do a design-build, and so if there's, this would be an opportunity for anybody that's opposed to a design-build, by statute, would be able to object to that, correct?
Correct.
Right. Yes.
So Kurt, the total of this is estimated $7 million. Is it big enough? Is this a big enough project to get interest for design-build? I know typically it's kind of like 10 million and up is what you look at, but...
Let me clarify. The $7 million was the total KDHE loan. I think this project's going to come in around 2.3 million total. But to answer your question, but to answer your question, yes, I think we're going to have two or three firms at least that will be interested in this project.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Is there anyone wanting to speak in opposition to design-build? Anybody wanting to speak in favor of the design-build? Okay. Henry, there's plenty of seating on up front if you want. There, is there a motion of the board?
I will move that we close the public hearing and approve the request.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing and approve the request by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Passes three to zero. All right. Thank you.
And then does that give me permission to move forward with design-build?
And then I guess if Commissioner...
Yeah, I believe, yeah, that's what we just put on, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, all right. Our next item.
Item C, Emergency Management. Number one, consider approval to establish an emergency management specialist position.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dustin Nichols, Emergency Management. Pretty self-explanatory. I have worked with auto finance and HR to establish a position, and I think we've got everybody informed that they need to be informed, so.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Rippon, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Our next item. Thank you.
Item D, Solid Waste. Number one, request to fill the household hazardous waste assistant manager position in pay range 14, Step Three. Funding will come from the solid waste operation budget, which is user-fee funded.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Sutcliffe, Shawnee County Solid Waste. We are asking to fill the assistant manager position at our household hazardous waste facility at a Step Three as opposed to a Step One. That difference is about a dollar and 13 cents per hour. We have conducted several interviews over the past two months, and we found a good candidate with some pretty good qualifications, and this Step Three will get him on board. So subject to your questions, gentlemen.
And you did go through the HR office prior to this?
Yes, I consulted with HR and Swells Auto Finance, yes.
Okay. Questions?
No. I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Rippon, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Passes three to zero. Thank you, Bill. Our next item.
Item E, Health Department. Number one, consider authorization and execution of Contract C 252, 2024, Memorandum of Understanding with United Way to serve as the fiscal agent for the Early Childhood Block Grant with an award of $255,384 to the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Teresa Fisher, Director of the Health Department. This is a longstanding agreement with United Way, and it's time for our annual renewal with them. This particular grant is, they serve as the fiscal agent for our collaborative, our Capital Area Smart Start Collaborative that's got eight different partners. Our particular funding goes for our Nurse Family Partnership Program, which is our evidence-based home visitation program. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? I'll move, okay, go ahead.
I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. All opposed. It passes three to zero. Thank you. Our next item.
Item F, Parks and Recreation. Number one, approval is requested on change orders 1 through 10 for the Family Park Project with MCP build per Shawnee County Contract C 317, 2023. The change orders address adjustments to electrical, concrete, water, amenities, and irrigation. The total contract funding will increase by $35,089, which is provided by the department's Building Maintenance Fund.
Good morning. Tim Loren, Parks and Recreation Department. I want to make one correction to this. When we submitted this, we were planning on paying for it out of our Building Maintenance Fund. But after having some discussions with our contractor, MCP, they are willing to pay for these changes out of their contingency, which, as if you remember, is built into the cost of the project. So that's in the, just under slightly $4 million total project cost. So we will not be using the department's Building Maintenance Fund. We'll be using MCP's contingency fund to do this. And as far as the upgrades or the changes that we're asking about, we're doing some upgrades to the lighting system on the pickleball courts so that folks, when they're, we don't have to leave the lights on every night until 11. If there's nobody there, the lights will go out. If there's somebody there that wants to play, they can go push a button. It turns the lights on for that zone, and it'll be on for a certain period of time, and then it'll remind them with a little light, a little strobe light, telling them that their time's about to expire, and they can go push the button again and keep playing. So be a little bit more cost-effective. We've also made some additional improvements to the ADA ramps, sidewalks, that were in the existing parking lot. So when they did Midwest Health Aquatic Center, there are ADA entrances and exits to get into that area, that, on the sidewalk. But the way this project is designed, when you walk out of the pool, if you walk straight, you'll walk straight into our playground. You go across the parking lot and into the playground. Those areas did not have access, ADA access. So we added those as part of this. And then upgrades to our irrigation system so that we can keep our landscape beds looking good all year. We did, I want to increase the height of the fences on either end of the pickleball courts so that they can withstand the winds and when we put the...
What, screens?
Screens on there, wind screens on those fences, so we had to make them taller. That's the majority of it. There's additional concrete pads being poured for additional amenities, so trash cans, benches, things like that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about all of this.
Questions? Commissioner Rippon?
So wind screens were part of the project?
Wind screens, we're, wind screens are on the project, but I believe we're paying for the wind screens ourself. Like, we're supplying the wind screens, but we needed to make the fence beefy enough to handle that.
If you look on the memorandum, it does show that it was deleted. It was a cost of $3,000. So...
Yeah.
I was out there the other day, and there's a lot of wind there.
There is, yeah.
A wiffle ball. They kind of blow around. That's good.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mays?
So obviously, like, the wind screens are going to be needed, and they don't cost much in the grand scheme of things. But are we doing some plantings that hopefully in, you know, five years, we have enough of a break from trees that we won't need them?
Yeah. We have definitely talked about it, and I think it was in our initial plans to do some plantings on the end between the golf course and the pickleball complex. The other side, if you can picture it, when you're up in that parking lot, it goes down. So there's a berm essentially, and you're in a lower spot. So we're going to see how that plays out, how the wind affects, you know, that. Being down lower than the parking lot, hopefully we don't have a wind issue there. But if so, we might have to plant some trees up along that berm.
Other questions? Motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
And your motion is to approve as amended, showing that it's coming from the contingency and not from the Building Maintenance Fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Got that, Madam Clerk? Okay. So, motion to approve with the amendment by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Passes three to zero. Thank you.
I do want to note before we move on, so I don't think I mentioned it, that we do anticipate this project coming in at budget. So I think even with these change orders, we're not going to exceed the, 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 just under $4 million total that you approved.
That's great. That's, we appreciate that.
But you have a timeline on this project, or...
Well, I'm hesitant to say it, but it's close. I think here in the next couple of weeks, they'll be turning it over to us. So we'll be obviously planning a ribbon cutting and a celebration to open it up. And at that time, I believe everything will be complete, with the exception possibly of the shelter. The pad is poured, the electricity's ready to go, but we, not us, but MCP has not received the shelter yet from the vendor. So that might, we might have a little wait on that, but everything else will be ready to roll.
Yeah, great. Very good. Our next item.
Number two, consider approval and execution to award bid Q 27-24 and the subsequent agreement, Contract C 251, 2024, with Merakreet for the installation of concrete sidewalks, table pad, and art paths at McKinley Park at a cost of $27,645, with funding from the City of Topeka Dreams Grant is requested by Shawnee County Parks and Recreation.
Tim Loren, Parks and Recreation Department. So as the clerk said, we are, this is a Topeka Grants, Dream Grant project. So we've been working with them on this for really almost a couple of years on this one. But this should complete everything at McKinley Park, but this is an art walk. There's already, they've already identified the art pieces that are going in. So it'll be a nice little improvement for the park and make it even easier to get around in that park and provide a little walking path for folks. So I think it's a nice upgrade. And the North Topeka West, NIA, is who we've been dealing with, and they've been, they've been a good group to work with, so.
Yeah. Any questions? Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Passes three to zero. Our next item.
Number three, consideration and execution for Parks and Recreation to utilize the inter-local purchasing system program tips for repurposing the Crestview Community Center tennis courts at a cost of $101,634 from the Summer Camp Revolving Fund.
Tim Loren, Parks and Recreation Department. So, yeah, we would like to, the tennis courts at Crestview are in pretty bad shape, and so we would like to convert those courts into two full-size basketball courts. We think that they'll get more use than what was the tennis courts were getting previously. I know during the summertime, our camps will utilize that space, not only for basketball, but for a lot of activities they'll be able to do out there. That is why we're using revolving funds from the camp to pay for this project. So we think it'll be a great addition. If approved, we believe we can get in there and have this done by the end of October. So it'll be ready to roll for next summer. Be happy to answer any questions.
What does this project involve? Do you have to rip out all the concrete?
No, they're going to, they're going to go in and do a mill and overlay of the existing area. Is that correct? Yep. So, and they'll go in, patch all the cracks, then do the milling overlay. And then they're, they'll come in and do court resurf, or court surfacing for the basketball. So it'll be, it'll be a neat surface when it's done. It'll be a little bit, a little bit fancier than just your standard outdoor basketball court. And then this project comes not only with the work on the surface, but four goals, backboards, all new fencing. So, and it's all turnkey, so it should be done relatively quickly.
So this is, forgive me, but when I hear milling overlay, I think asphalt.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's why I paused, you know, because I'm not quite exactly sure how this works either. I don't know how much conversation that we've had, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot. But we, I will tell you this. We have worked with this company before. They are the ones that did the court resurfacing of use the last time we did it. And we've used them prior to that. That's been my only interaction with them. We have every confidence that they know what they're doing, and that we think this will turn out great.
So, unrelated but sort of related, the tennis courts at Gage Park are also in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any, are you looking into any kind of doing something similar over there as well?
Well, you know, what we're doing right now, we're in the middle of, we're getting closer to wrapping up that master plan for Gage Park. And so we're not, we don't have any, anything scheduled at this point, because there's a lot of discussion and a lot of thought about relocating some of those courts and using that space for something else.
Okay.
But none of that's been decided. We're obviously, we'll get to the point where we bring that master plan up here and explain what we're thinking. You guys will have a chance to weigh in and approve it. But, but you are correct. If we're, if we choose not to move them, they definitely need some attention.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think it's a good idea. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed, passes three to zero. Our next item.
Item G, Audit Finance, number one, 2025 Capital Improvement Projects Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Sauer, Financial Administrator. I'm here today to start our 2025 Capital Improvement Project Discussion. As part of our projects, we are, part of our budget process, we always have our departments submit to us their capital improvement project requests over the upcoming five years. So that would be for years 2025 through 2029. A capital improvement project is defined as a project that's over $50,000 and with a useful life of more than five years, therefore it qualifies as being a capital improvement. And when we received those requests this year, the totals, here I have it broke down by different funding source, they totaled, whoops, $133,897,446. Our CIP request by department shows the, as, as we would expect, the largest requister of our CIP is Public Works because they maintain the county's infrastructure, the roads, the bridges, and they have projects totaling a little over $56 million over the next five years. Our next largest is the Department of Corrections with some large improvements to the, to their facilities planned out in the next five years, followed by Parks and Rec and Community Corrections, with also some large capital improvement projects in the upcoming five years. Specific to our Capital Outlay Fund, which is a fund that is funded by our General Fund of Shawnee County, these are the requests made over the following, our upcoming five years of capital outlay specific funding. And you'll see, that's where you'll see Public Works drops down from their $50 million to $1.6 million, showing how the other funding sources that they have. We have in this, in just our Capital Outlay Fund, the, we have the Sheriff's Office requesting a little over $5 million. Elections Office has a large $3 million expenditure over the next five years. Emergency Management, Parks and Rec, and the Event Center are also a little in the $2 million area. So with that said, normally what we do is we start going through each of the specific funding areas so that we can kind of show you the requests from the departments, broken down by specific funding sources other than the shared capital outlay funding. So Solid Waste has seven projects, I believe, that total $7 million. They are lined out over the upcoming five years with $1.4 million being requested in this upcoming budget year. This is funding that would come out of the Solid Waste Fund, which is not a part of the Shawnee County budget per se. It is a standalone, self-funded, self-funded. I, I can't.
User fee funded.
User fee funded, yeah. Sorry. But if you have any questions for any of these projects, Bill is here. If you wanted to ask any of those questions or if you wanted to move to approve any of these items today, that would also be allowable.
Any questions for Jennifer or Mr. Sutton?
So, yeah, so Bill, could you, have you received any of the equipment that we were supposed to buy this year? I, I know that you've had a hard time getting some of those things that we had ordered in the past because of backlogs or whatever, but have you gotten all the equipment that you were supposed to get last year?
Bill Sutton, Shawnee County Solid Waste. I am still waiting on delivery for seven vehicles and these were ordered in 2023, so last year's. They are, now, when we talk about these vehicles, they're not made in parallel with your, each other. So you have the chassis that's being made and then the body. One would think that you'd make those parallel, but that's not the case. So they make the chassis, then they ship to the body. All seven vehicles are at the body manufacturer now, so we should be getting these within a couple of months.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask was in your presentation a couple of weeks ago, you talked about these little, I don't know the, what you call them, but it's basically a one-ton truck with a, a small dumpster type thing on the back. Is that included in any of these requests?
No, sir, it's not. That was kind of a discovery that we, I discovered after we submitted the budget. And, you know, as you know, I am 100% user fee funded, no tax dollars used. So this, that, if we do do that purchase, that might be something that I just kind of fit into my budget with Audit Finance and Approval. I am ahead of budget this year, so there should be no, no issue with me.
Would, would a couple of those replace like one of the rear loaders or something like that in your request or?
I don't think, no, because these are more of a, their capacity is about 4,000 pounds, obviously significant, like less than one of my other trucks. And these would be just for predominantly for out of area, you know, we had to do some type of go back or even in winter time when we have those roads that we just can't get to help out our customers. And a good thing about this is I could pull that actually out of the truck and then use that as a regular pickup if I needed to.
The, the rear loaders, is it, is that just one or is that?
That is several, sir.
Several. I was gonna say, okay, it just didn't have numbers in there. All these, are they multiple units?
Absolutely, sir, yes.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and approve the 2025 request utilizing the Solid Waste Fund. Again, this is user fee, not taxpayer prop, you know, tax or other, but this is user fee funded, so. And these are, were part of the budget presentation of the Solid Waste and are necessary components of the Solid Waste operation.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, again approving the 2025 request, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye. All opposed, passes three to zero. Our next item, or I guess next area.
That's right. My next item.
Yeah.
Is the Public Works funding. We have several items that are funded through Public Works. They have three, actually it's, this first section is three, so they have about five different funding sources that are shown on this spreadsheet. They have special highway, special bridge, special machinery or equipment funding. They have infrastructure fund and they have county sales tax funds. So these projects are funded through Public Works funding, separate from the Capital Outlay Fund. So we track all of these separately. There's about $54 million of its $55 million CIP over the five years fall in this category. And Kurt is here if you have any questions specifically on any of these items.
Kurt, would you mind just kind of walking us through some of your 2025 projects or, I know there's a lot of culverts.
Yeah, Kurt Neehouse, Director of Public Works. Without going into specifics, these are just culverts or bridges or road projects that we've identified as a high priority for 2025. A lot of these have been on the five-year plan for quite some time. As we move forward in time, obviously we get to the point where it's time to build these projects. The equipment, again, is equipment that we think it's time to replace. We have a budget. I started out budgeting approximately $650,000 per year for equipment. Through inflation, we're, we're getting closer to $700,000 and we stick pretty close to that, that budget for equipment. And so all of these projects that you see here, we have funds available to complete them. So either sales tax money, leftover operational budget funds that go into special bridge, special road, special machinery. Sales tax, obviously, from our bridge standpoint, is our number one source of funds. Culverts, if the replacement is going to be a bridge-sized structure, I am allowed to use sales tax funds for those.
Well, I noticed that you have only one that is going to be coming from the Infrastructure Fund and that is $5,800,000 for the 29th Street and Southwest Auburn intersection improvement.
And let me be clear on that. That is just the 2025 expenditure. We expect expenditures to, to continue on that. As I talked about here a couple, two or three weeks ago, that total project is at $12.5 million.
So that would just be the 2025 portion?
Correct, yes.
And again, that is coming from the Infrastructure Fund as opposed to sales tax or from the highway bridge?
Yeah, I've tried my best over the last few years to save money, put it in a piggy bank so that the funds are available for that project.
Questions for Kurt?
Just as a reminder for everybody, how many bridges do we?
Right now, we've gained one since the last time you asked me that. We have 261 bridges.
So it's obvious that if we don't do a certain number every year, we're going to be behind, so we just.
Correct. And with our continuous sales tax programs that we've had for a number of years, I think for many counties, we are, they envy us where our bridges are at.
Kurt, on your list, you also have a backhoe replacement and a mower tractor, along with a skid steer for, and a dump truck refresh for 2025.
Correct.
Do you want to, I mean, are these just replacing current equipment that we already have?
They're, they're replacing the backhoe. It's, it's two backhoes and yes, they will replace existing piece of equipment that we have. We will surplus the existing equipment through Purple Wave and that will be a, or I hope to have that as a credit against the, the retail cost of the new equipment.
Okay.
Kurt, the dump truck refresh, it says $15,000. It doesn't seem like much for.
Remember, I'm, I'm requesting, I think approximately, gosh, $150,000 or more in capital funds, capital outlay funds for that. So there's, that's why from my budget standpoint, the $15,000 is coming out of special machinery.
Yeah, it was the same question I was about to ask, so.
And just a reminder, the 2025 funding sources are more nailed down than any of the future years. The rest of the years, '26 through '29, are our best current estimate of how those will be spent and priorities change as needs change. So some of those future out years could fluctuate, but these are the projects that right now Kurt has them scheduled in his various spending sources.
And as Jennifer talked about, and as I have done over the past 12 months, we moved a couple of bridge projects up to your consternation. She wanted to know where that project went. So yes, I hope that you understand that for '26 through '29, that's a planning document and if funds become available or circumstances change and we need to move something up and the funds are available, we'd like to be able to do that.
So the only other question is, Kurt, do you want to talk about the county sales tax project for 2025 being the 46th Street Button Road to Rochester?
Right. That project was scheduled to have funds available beginning in 2027 with money for construction from 2029 through the last year of the program, 2031. But I would like to get a head start on that project, so I'm hoping to spend a little bit money, a little bit of money in 2025 for consultant design services. We need to get ahead of this project. It's going to involve a significant impact to the community. I want to make sure we, we, we work with the community. We have public meetings that the community knows how much property that we might need to accomplish that project. And so I'm, I'm hoping to get a head start on that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have any modifications, so I'll, I'll move that we approve it for 25.
Second.
Motion to approve the 2025 request by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye. All opposed, passes three to zero.
Thank you. Our next set of funding that we have spotted to discuss is the Departmental Equipment Funds. We have a couple of departments who have previously approved equipment funds that have a couple of projects in them. Neither of them have projects for 2025. Currently, the DOC does not have any projects listed out of their Safety Equipment Fund for the next five years. And the Noxious Weed Department only has the building expansion and just like you guys talked about with the last funding, it is showing $400,000 in this funding source and also a $400,000 spend in 2027 out of cap outlay as well. So the project itself is $800,000.
That $400,000, is that $400,000 that has been set aside already or is it to be, is it just, they're hoping to identify that as a need in 2027?
I believe it's just listed as a need. I'm not sure where his, his project funding is at this point.
John Land, the Director of the Weed Department. Commissioner Cook, are you, are you talking about the 400 out of CIP or are you talking about the 400 out of, out of the Equipment, Noxious Weed Equipment Fund?
The Noxious Weed Equipment Fund.
That money is, is, is not all there yet. It's, it's, we anticipate that money being there in '27.
Okay, all right.
So that fund sits roughly around 200 right now.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Mays?
This is a similar question on the DOC Safety Equipment Fund. If there's no projects planned, are we playing something long-term with that? Or is there money in that account now?
There is money in that account right now and they are currently in the middle of a large project. Brian, you might be able to answer the details.
Good morning. Shawnee County Department of Corrections, Brian Cole. Yes, we are, I don't know what the actual total is in the bun, but we're, or in the fund, but we are working closely with Audit Finance. We are working in the middle of a project with some security equipment that we're going to use there. So I'd like to be able to use that to, to, as an alternative to any type of capital outlay or CIP program. I think we can use that, how that money was set up, to help us refresh some equipment for our, our security system. And we're going to use, we want to use that this year. So we're working with them on that.
Okay. So do we need to just defer action until we can get that added, that equipment added on to the request?
Well, we're going to do that this year. So go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's right. There was a contract that was signed, that was approved at the end of 2023 for the use of that funding. So there's already a project, you guys, so.
Oh, you said this year, you're meaning '24.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I thought you meant this budget, sorry.
No, no, it'll be '24. Yeah, we're replacing the, the interior motors and doors.
The doors, yeah.
Yeah. We think we'll have some left and if there is, you know, we'll, we'll save it or use it for something, but the majority of it has to go to that.
Okay, great. Good to know, thank you.
Thank you.
And just a reminder, this is approving the funding sources of each of these projects. It's not necessarily approving the projects themselves. Those will all come back to the commission for approval for, of the contracts and the projects themselves individually, knowing that the funding source has been allocated for them through this process. So there's nothing for 2025, so I don't know that you guys need to do anything on this slide today. The next. The next sources of funding are the various funding sources that Parks and Rec has available. They have a revolving fund, which they are requesting $375,000 to be used for a recreational building at Lake Shawnee in 2025. They additionally have the Gage Park sales tax funding, and they have several projects that they have slated to take place over the next five years, and they are seeking approval for those projects today. I know Tim is here, if you have additional questions on this.
Commissioner Mays, do you want to talk about the tennis courts again? I know that we just discussed it under Gage Park.
No. No, I mean, I don't know.
I didn't know if we want to slate that onto a future project for Gage Park, because we're looking out '25, '26, '27, '28, and it's not specifically identified here.
It's all contingent on the master plan, right? What you guys want to end up doing over there?
Yeah, Timler at Parks and Recreation Department, yeah, that's the thought, is that there's, there's a lot of moving pieces with that. Not only go too far in the weeds, but a lot of it depends on what the zoo does with their expansion, and if they start to move into areas that we're currently occupying, then that would really force our hand and make us make some decisions sooner rather than later. And there have been some grumblings about that, because they're also the beneficiaries of the Gage Park Improvement Authority funds, so. So I don't have anything, we have ideas for that space, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be prepared today to tell you exactly where tennis was going to end up.
Tim, what is this recreation building at Lake Shawnee?
Yeah, so the Ruck Building already exists, and that's where we hold our summer camps out at Lake Shawnee. And the building is pretty old and in need of some attention and a little bit of expansion. So we think it would, we just want to improve that facility and make it a little bit better. And hopefully, we, well, and I think we would increase attendance at our summer camps as a result.
Which building is it?
It's called the Ruck Building, which is an odd thing, but it's, as you turn into, if you were heading to Reynolds Lodge, it's right there in Tin Man Circle, it's that very first building, it's got a small playground.
Used to be the preschool.
Yes, it did, used to be the preschool building. Pretty nondescript little building.
That's what I always thought it was, just the preschool.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we run our summer camps out of.
I have a question about your Gage Park projects. What's the cutoff of what would be on this list? I mean, does it have to be over $100,000, or, because I mean, you're going to have some smaller projects that come rolling in and...
No, I don't think there's a specific cutoff as far as what's on this list. We just listed the ones that we know we'd like to accomplish sooner rather than later, and are large-ticket items that we would need to bring before this board, if I'm answering your question.
I just didn't know how much, I mean, where it's a sales tax, and you have this, you're an improvement authority. I didn't know where we step in on some of these projects, and I don't know.
Well, I mean, the way I understand it, and Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, that since this money is essentially outside of our budgeted, the budget that you allow us to spend, anytime we're going to spend money from the Gage Park Improvement Authority, I have to come up here and get permission to do so. So that doesn't matter if it's, you know, $2.5 million for the playground, or, you know, $500 to do a new fence, you know, it'll come up before this board.
All right, I just didn't know if there was a cutoff amount, you know? Say, something comes in that's $50,000, is that something you could still do, just come back to us? It doesn't necessarily have to be in the CIP?
Absolutely, so this is the plan, as it exists today, for the funding for the Gage Park sales tax. And the CIP projects are any projects over $50,000, and that will last more than five years. So if it's not one of those, if it doesn't meet that definition, it wouldn't be on this list. And if it's not necessarily on the plan as it existed, I guess on June 1st is when we always were due, then it wouldn't be on this list. But again, before any project takes place, just because a project isn't on this list doesn't mean it can't be brought forward to the commission to ask for consideration.
I guess where I'm going with all this, with this master plan coming in, it may change, it may change the focus all of a sudden, so. Wonder how flexible we work here.
Carousel building replacement, $3.5 million?
Yeah.
I mean, didn't Bill Rippon build the first one? I mean, I know...
That may be why we need to replace it, I don't know.
I could talk, I can talk a little bit about that, I think, and I think I've mentioned it here before. A couple of things. So one, I did mention that there are some rumblings about the zoo wanting to do, they are doing a new project now that they've made fairly public, but there is discussion about expansion. And if we were to lose Big Gage Shelter, that will be an issue for us and our summer camps, and I think that that will happen one day. Same way with the Helen Hawker facilities, there'll have to be a decision made there about, does the zoo then take that over? Or are we going to build a new Helen Hawker Theater and continue those programs? All those things will need to be decided. When you talk about the carousel building, one of the things that we're looking at is adding a space, a rentable space, on to that facility. So if we lose Big Gage, or if we just decide to give Big Gage to the zoo, we've got something to replace it. That would be a great space to be dropping your kids off for camp, as opposed to what is probably the busiest location in Gage Park, right there in front of the zoo entrance. So that, we think there's some synergy there. We've talked about possibly having two train depots, or even moving the train depot operations to the carousel spot. We have an event coming up at the end of the month, the Founder's Fest at Gage Park, and we're going to actually have a stop at the carousel as part of that event. So if you're there that day, you can ride the train for free, and you can stop at both locations. So it'll be a little trial run of what, how that might look in the future. So the carousel building, yeah, we think that we can add some other amenities to it. You've already got a big parking lot there that even during the summer, when Blaisdell's in full swing, is not full. So we can utilize that parking area where the tennis courts are. We've talked about that being a possible landing spot for a Helen Hawker Theater, if we have to move it. We're not advocating for moving it, but if we have to move it, that could be where that goes. So there's a lot of, lot of moving parts, and the carousel is definitely a big piece of that.
Discussion? All right. Is there any motions then as to the 2025 request? Which are specifically the recreation building at Lake Shawnee, using the revolving fund, and then the Gage Park playground renovation, using the Gage Park sales tax? Okay, I'll make a motion then to approve both requests.
A second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye, all opposed, passes three to zero.
The next funding source we have is out of our general fund. We have one department, the District Attorney's Department, who has a project that they are requesting, it's a capital project, but it would be an increase, or it would be charged to their departmental budget. So this would come out of the 10DA 000 funding source, and this would be approving the project itself, being funded by the budgeted funds of the district attorney. And that is for their Axon Justice Digital Evidence Management and Discovery project. Additionally, we had the facilities management request a project to do the courthouse roof replacement after the courthouse renovations are complete due to the updating of the HVAC equipment and other equipment that was placed up on the roof during the renovation. And that would be funded out of a building maintenance fund we have that is set aside for roofs and parking lots.
Commissioner Mays?
On the courthouse roof, will there be any contingency money left from that project at all? No, okay.
I would guess...
Nell is shaking her head no.
I would guess no, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the Axon Justice. The district attorney presented that during the budget, and again, this is pretty essential for their office and operations and managing the software there, so I will make a request for that approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye, all opposed, passes three to zero. Is there any discussion as to the courthouse roof replacement?
No, I think we kind of have to do it, so I'll move for approval.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Mays. Second by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor say aye, all opposed, passes three to zero.
And that brings us to the capital outlay requests that have been made. We have broken the 2025 capital outlay requests into its own spreadsheet, just because there are several items that fall in this category. Each of the, during the budget process, each of the departments spoke about their projects, and US Commissioners scored them. The priority score is the cumulative priority score that averaged out whenever we put in the scores for all three Commissioners. And then these are just listed in priority order, from one being the highest priority down to five, which would be the lowest priority.
Okay.
And I believe we have most, if not all, departments here to answer questions that you have. Additionally, I guess, let me also say, included in my budget request for the general fund, I did request $2 million to be set aside for cap outlay. That has been historically what we have included in our budget. So that has not been approved yet, obviously, because our budget has not been approved. But I can put that in here, if you would like, just as a placekeeper, so that you can see how much money would, has not been approved of that $2 million.
Okay. Jennifer, can we start with the courthouse restroom renovations?
Yeah.
Was there not money that was previously set aside for that?
Yes, currently, this request is $75,000 every year. It started in 2024, I believe was the first year, and that was approved last year. That money, that project has not yet started. I believe it's getting ready to go out for some RFPs for starting the use of that money. But yeah, that money, that $75,000 is still sitting in the capital outlay fund as an approved project, but not yet started.
Nice, Nell is coming up forward.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nell DeHennig, Director of Facilities. I have reached out to three architectural firms to review the project. The response back I received from them is that they are expecting this to be a half a million-dollar project in total. And I know that we had set aside $75,000 a year with the hopes that we could do pieces and parts, but based on what we have found during the renovation of the courthouse, the interior sewer lines are degrading at a rate that's making it a chemical critical issue.
So the amount that you're talking about, would that be for all restrooms or per floor?
That would be for all restrooms, for the total project to redo, not just the restrooms, but also the stack that ties those restrooms together.
Now, is that all restrooms, public restrooms, or is that all restrooms, including the ones that are in the judges' chambers?
This is just the public bathrooms.
Okay. And then, we already have $75,000 set aside?
Yes.
And they're now anticipating it being how much?
Half a million dollars. I was looking at possibly contracting with a firm here in the next couple of weeks to do a preliminary schematic design and budget, so that we can talk about it for the future. That proposal would be about $8,000 if we were to move forward with it. Then we would have a better idea of what exactly the amount would be.
And would this not something that we could phase into floor by floor, year by year?
Not based on what we're finding out from the renovation project and the shake the pipes, no. They are cast iron, and they have degraded down to the point where we're having breakage.
And these are, again, original to the building's construction in 1965?
That is correct.
Or '63, rather, but...
'63, '65.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
And how long have we known this needs to be replaced?
Well, we talked about this in 2023, 2024, knowing that there was possibly an issue, but it came more to light of the importance of it during the renovation project, because we've been in, working in some of these chase ways that we have found, that how bad the pipes are getting.
So is this a situation where we're going to have to rip out, like, walls that were just put up?
No, no, the chase ways run between the men's and women's restroom, all the way up from the basement up. So we would have to go in and take out a wall, either on the men's side or the women's side, in the restroom itself. But it would not affect anything that we have done with the project.
And then, switching gears just briefly, on the JP Lewis HVAC replacement, we had an item last week that was under contingency. Is this the same item?
No, that was the fire alarm system. The HVAC system, as we had talked about last year, we had spent approximately $38,000 repairing that system to keep it going. Trace is here today, too. We have spent, and I don't have a total yet, but we have basically spent close to that this year, again, trying to keep the system running, between units going bad, compressors going bad, just continuous issues that we've had with that system. I did have an engineer look into that system, kind of as a favor for me. He's saying that we can probably reuse most of the head system that is existing and the piping that's existing, but he's still anticipating it being a $350,000 project. Because the type of system it is, it was not, it was popular when it was put in. It has shown over the years to not be reliable, and so he's recommending to switch systems and going away from it. The parts are almost impossible to get. With this last compressor, we've had a 10-day, 10-workday wait period to get it. We've also had problems with the controls. Getting the controls took almost 90 days. It just seems to be an ongoing problem, expense. And as it stands right now, my apartment has been, my budget has been taking the full brunt of replacing everything over there.
Commissioner Rippon, any areas you want to talk about specifically or ask about?
Yeah, I was looking through here, I haven't found one yet.
Commissioner Mays?
Not looking good so far today.
Unfortunately, the items that deal with building maintenance are large-ticket items.
The courthouse landscaping and irrigation was, again, not part of the renovation project?
It was not, no. We knew, the irrigation had not worked when I came to the county, so we knew it was failing. And when the project came out, I decided not to pursue replacing it, because I knew it would get torn up with the project, as you've seen, the sidewalks look lovely. So, and then we have the condensing units out in the front of the courthouse. I would like, part of the project would be not only replacing the irrigation, but screening those condensing units from the public in a little bit more appealing way, and then replacing some of the overgrown evergreens that need some attention.
Nell, go ahead.
No, so that's, basically, if we don't fund this this year, and if I can take it out of my budget, I will, but if we don't do it this year, the yard grass will be totally gone. It's been yellowed for the last couple of years, and it's mainly weeds at this point.
The sidewalks that have been torn up through construction, will they be replaced as part of our ongoing project, or is that...
Yes, there is money in the construction project to replace all the sidewalks. We actually walked it yesterday. We feel that probably 80% of the sidewalks will be replaced, and from what we've discovered, it's probably a good... And from what we've discovered, it's probably a good thing because they weren't really built correctly originally. But yes, it is in the project budget and that will be taken care of. We're scheduling it right now for the 1st of November for replacement.
Jennifer, on the courthouse restroom renovations, do you want to go ahead and change that number from 75 to 500 now that we have that information?
Can.
That increases the total amount to close to 600,000 or?
I'm sorry, I'm just getting rid of future years at 75.
Yeah.
And I'm also removing that fire alarm, JP Lewis fire alarm that you guys just approved last week.
Okay.
Out of contingency.
So, we scrolled to the bottom, that increases that almost 6 million?
Yes.
And typically, we set aside 2 million?
Correct. So, the one project I can speak to out of the general, the third item that's listed here, is since the CIP projects themselves are defined as being over $50,000, we have several departments who have capital outlay projects that are under $50,000. So, they don't, they don't meet the definition of a CIP project, but they are also large enough that they make an impact on an individual department's budget, especially if it's a smaller department. We have some departments who truly don't carry, they carry 90% of their budget in their personnel area. So, each year, we do ask for $100,000 for those smaller item capital outlay projects. And we come back in November and bring you the list of small item capital outlay projects that are requested each year.
Jennifer, on number 20, which is the backhoe replacement from Public Works, is that different than what we just approved under the special highway fund?
Yes, this is the remainder of that. I'm looking for that here and I'm not, there it is.
That was a dump truck though.
No, dump truck refresh is one, but backhoe replacement is also one.
Correct. Yes, this, the $100,000, this is the backhoe replacement. The other $15,000 is in the special machinery. And so, this is, every year, Public Works, in addition to the amounts that they fund out of their special machinery, they usually make a request of $300,000 each year to be funded by the capital outlay fund to assist their department in getting the funding for all of the equipment that they need.
Yeah, the dump truck refresh was 15,000, the backhoe replacement was 140 under the special highway fund. Sheriff's Office, do you want to talk about your request? Is it just, this is just a standard request for vehicle replacement?
I believe they have four items that are listed for out of 2025. They have the pursuit rated vehicles, the MDT refresh, the garage equipment and tech updates, and the range target refresh.
Shane Edler, Sheriff's Office. The vehicles is, as I state every year when I get up here, is an ongoing amount of miles that we drive every year. And the response, emergency response vehicles, we have to keep them as up to date and effective and safe for not only the public, but our officers as well. I can talk about that more if you want, but it's typically 10 to 12 vehicles every year is what we have to purchase to keep our fleet and the response vehicles at a mileage rate that is safe for everyone.
Could you speak to the MDT refresh also?
Absolutely. I'll speak to all of them if you would like.
Yeah, that's great.
That's fine. The MDT refresh is the mobile data terminals, the laptops that our officers have in the vehicles. It's just a tech refresh. Don't remember the exact year we bought the last MDTs, but they're at a five-year rate and they'll need to be replaced, just as technology, operating systems, windows. I'm not a tech guy, but the operating system will need to be updated. And with this refresh, we can, we can get that done.
So, the 450 would replace all of them, or is this like a percentage of them, or?
That, no, that would be all of our MDTs that are in our vehicles, yes.
So, of the ones that you have now, like if one breaks, like what do you guys do right now?
Typically, when we make these purchases, they come with a factory warranty. Some, we have experimented with getting extended warranties on them. They typically get broken and we'll just pay for those repairs out of our general fund, depending on whether or not it's in warranty or out of warranty. Right now, we're seeing a lot of failures with the screens. And this proposal will get us back to a one-piece laptop. We had, the officers liked the idea initially. The ones we have now have removable screens that you can take in and use it as a tablet. What we're seeing is a lot of failures on that once they got aged. So, we're going to go back to just a one-piece, but it's not removable without a removable screen, so we hopefully don't have those failures in the future.
Okay.
If you're okay with that, I'll move on to the, I need my glasses on here.
Garage equipment.
The garage equipment, that was in anticipation of moving the garage, that is currently on hold as we all know. Just the equipment that, some of that equipment is currently shared with Public Works, just to get that garage up and running. Some of the equipment that we have there will be movable from our current location to the new location. I believe that that money, the $100,000, will allow for us to be operational at the new location. The range target refresh, as you know, the range has been there for a lot of years now. And that moving target system, turning target system is pneumatic. Kansas weather, Kansas rodents, Kansas issues. That system is not functional. Technology has advanced and now this would get us into a system that wouldn't be relying on pneumatics, upgraded system. We use our turning target system, Department of Corrections uses our range, other agencies use our range, just to keep that system at the peak of where it needs to be for officers for training.
The other agencies that use the range, do they compensate you guys at all, or?
Typically, some of the smaller agencies know, the answer is no. Some of the federal agencies, what they've done is they will do it in kind. Like if we need new targets or other equipment, they'll ask us what our needs are and then we'll get some money from other agencies for that.
Well, that was going to be my next question, is if they would be willing to contribute at all to the?
We're, and just so you know, and all these are from general fund requests. We are looking, as a matter of fact, all the time on trying to get grants, to see what grants make sense for us. And we're looking, don't know what's available, it's a constant look, but.
Well, the MDT looks like something that might be eligible for a burn-jag grant, where the federal government pays for law enforcement equipment, so.
Yeah, with the, with the burn-jag that is currently on, and I don't know where our rotation, we typically split that with the city and the county. And then the county, we split it with DOC. I'm not sure where we're at exactly on that process right now, but the money would not cover that. There, there's a possibility that we could fund some of that out of our equipment and technology fund as well. There may be some other options for some of those things, probably, and again, because it's rated number one, the vehicles are probably the most critical for us. The garage, not sure when that piece is going to happen. The range, while it's down on our priority list, it is something that needs to be replaced fairly quickly. I think we might be able to manage some other things. The vehicles is what's really mission critical for the Sheriff's Office to keep our fleet safe.
Typically, we would be standing right now. I'm going to go ahead and just have us do a five-minute recess since we have so many people here. And so, I'm going to have us recess to, let's say from, it's almost 10:10. So, 10:15, we'll come back from recess. So, we're in recess till 10:15. Jennifer, if we could, I just want to, you've got some highlighted areas or you?
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. I unhighlighted. If I could update you just on something. So, Nell popped in during the break and mentioned that she has an EECBG grant that she is spending some money on this year. That is for, it is a switching lighting over to LED lighting for efficiencies. She believes that she has funding from a federal source for that. So, she said that I could move that over to the federal funding section for that $50,000.
Okay.
Which, that was the manner?
Mm-hmm. So, then, when I just was looking very simplistically and starting at the top and going down to seeing with your priority listing where your, your 2 million, where the $2 million budget that I requested would take us, that would take us down, not quite able to cover through the event center basketball court. But I believe there were two different levels of the sport court purchase that Kellen had presented during his budget presentation. One that was 267 and one that was 407.
Good morning Commissioners, Kellen Seitz, Stormont, Bill Vincenner. Yeah, we've got a way here to cut our request down and save some budget. This, our project is essentially three phases. There is the sport court phase, there's the renovation of our current basketball court and new basketball goals. That would be the second phase. And then the third phase is the acquisition of volleyball court netting as well as judging stanchion. That volleyball netting and judging stanchion is a $195,000 piece of this request. We're not going to be able to get the additional basketball goal infrastructure for the sport court. I think most importantly in our request is the first two phases, which is the sport court and then the renovation of our current basketball court infrastructure as well as the two new basketball goals for that. For the sport court itself, there's two different levels of sport court application that we could acquire. The one listed on this spreadsheet is at the higher level. The lower level, which is, I don't want to call it that, it's the exact same court surface. It's just not veneered with a maple overlay. It is a solid colored surface. And that court cost is $276,880 versus the veneer wood look, which is $407,000. So, based on my calculations here, if we went with the solid surface court option, as well as the renovation of our basketball court and the new basketball goals, we could get that entire project done for about $396,880. So, that would significantly reduce the amount. $396,880. So, that would significantly reduce the amount of requests that we would need. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm nervous with what you're saying. Sorry.
That number replaces, that combines the basketball court and the sports court?
Correct. Yeah, 276, 880 for the sport court and then 120, which would be the renovation of the basketball court and additionally the purchase of two new basketball goals for that court. And that would be in total, 396, 880.
So, with those two numbers, thank you, Kellen, but with those two numbers, then the $2 million would take you down to, including the JPL front entry floor replacement?
So, Ms. Welch, do you wanna talk about the court's self-help center? That's a...
There it is. Good morning, League Welch Court Administrator, Shawnee County District Court. So, the creation of a self-help center was part of the original courthouse renovation project, and that was one of the projects that was eliminated due to the overall cost of the project. Shawnee County is the only one of five urban courts in the state that does not have a dedicated self-help center for the public. Self-represented litigants are probably the largest share of small claims, limited action, domestic cases we have, and we don't have a space or a means to provide them with services in helping them find the right forms, getting them access to a computer and a printer so they can print free documents off the internet. It's an underserved population that we're hoping to be able to service here in the near future. It's been a goal of ours for several years. We're really excited when it was included as part of the renovation project, and the space is still available that the self-help center was originally designated for, which is the IT space on the north side of the second floor. When the IT server room moves to the basement, that space will become vacant, and it's in a prime location because it's just down the hall from the clerk of the court's office.
And that space is not being utilized by the district attorney?
Correct.
And is that renovating that space?
That would, yes, that would be renovating that space. Part of the renovation project is removing that raised floor that contained the air conditioning units for the servers. So, basically, once IT is out of that space and the raised floor is removed, it would be down to the floor and walls, and we would need to renovate some space and provide some furniture and possibly some computers in that space, as well as an office for one of our clerks who's gonna be assigned to manage that department.
Any questions for Ms. Welch? I think the other item the court had is the court's large judicial conference room, and this would be replacing what's on the fourth floor of the courthouse present?
Well, we would still use the administrative conference room in room 406. The issue we have is with the addition of the two new magistrate judges. When the legislature gave those positions to us in '21 or '22, we don't have enough space for like our criminal department meeting, our judges meeting with two additional judges. It's shoulder to shoulder in there, and that's the only meeting space we have available.
Why wouldn't we use the jury assembly room?
We are using the jury assembly room when it's available. We actually didn't, we didn't initially plan on using that jury assembly room for its intended purpose until '25 or when the construction project was completed. Due to heat levels, et cetera, on the fourth floor, we've been using that jury assembly room for its intended purpose, which has gotten the crowds off of the fourth floor. However, when we start the, when CENI starts the west end of the fourth floor renovation, from August 19th approximately till the end of December, that jury assembly room is gonna be used as a courtroom. We're gonna have a judge, court reporter, and AA assigned to that. That's gonna be their office spaces. That's gonna be their courtroom. So, once we get to the renovation project being completed, we're hopeful that we can use the jury assembly room for its intended purpose as well as meeting space.
Once the construction's complete, wouldn't we have the space in the sub-basement where emergency management is, where they have the large workroom?
We could have access to that as long as it's available. Dusty and his crew have graciously allowed us to use that space for the duration of the renovation project. That's another place we're putting one of our felony judges during these last two phases of renovation.
I know that it would mean coming across the street, but we also have our conference room in this building.
Correct.
Well, I mean, how many people are you needing to...
At least 20.
No. The basement of this building, conference room in the basement here, or even these chambers. So, I think we could probably hold off on the large conference room for now.
And that was, just as an aside, that was a project that was also included in the original scope of the courthouse renovation project, but that was stricken due to costs.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the court?
I figured you would've had enough construction in your life over the last couple of years that you wouldn't be seeking more.
I've had more than enough construction to last my lifetime, I guarantee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tim, can you come talk to us about Bettis turf replacement? I feel like it was just yesterday, although it may have been six years ago, that we just replaced turf at Bettis.
Tim Larnett, Parks Recreation. That is true. We did replace Parrish Family Field, also known as Pony Field, last year. And so, this would be, yeah, the quad fields would be the next on the list.
And the quad fields are on the boys' side, or the Bettis side?
Yes, yeah, they're at Bettis.
The smaller fields.
Yeah, the smaller diamonds. Yeah, and it's the same story. I mean, they're on their last leg. They've, you know, if you're lucky, you get eight to 10 years out of these. I think we're at 13, maybe 14 years now. So, they're, you're...
Questions? Because that's a rather sizable amount.
So, Tim, the trend right now with a lot of complexes is to turf the outfield also. Are you intending to do that with this, or...
I am not.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, as Commissioner Cook said, we're coming up here every year asking for funds to be able to replace this. I don't necessarily wanna get in a situation where we're expanding that, but, you know, quite honestly, we are. I mean, we're putting turf in at that family park. You know, it's a different kind of turf, and I think we'll get longer use out of that. So, we're continuing to add, I guess, to our turf facilities.
The tennis court resurfacing, they're getting kind of tough, lucky.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that they, that, we do such a great job with that facility, not just us, but our partners, the tennis, Topeka Tennis Association, and now we have a new group in there, racket and paddle running things. I think we're the envy of all the communities around us with that cost-over tennis facility. We wanna make sure we keep it at that top-notch level, and those courts are starting to show some pretty serious signs of wear. We just wanna try to nip that in the bud, and there, and there are some, we've included that in this request, but there are some funds that the Topeka Tennis Association is putting towards that. So, we would get a little relief from them if we're able to move forward.
So, there's also been a request, there's a nod on here, about adding three more courts at cost over.
Correct.
Is this something that if that were to move ahead, I know there's some private funding has been talked about with some of that, is that something that the resurfacing could kind of be built into the project cost?
Well, I think so. I think we could, yeah, absolutely. I don't know if there'd be a cost savings there, but if we were gonna move forward with those three courts, which I think is, obviously, I think's a great idea, we could try to do all that at one time, you know, or have whoever who's doing that work do the resurfacing. Might be some cost savings there. I'll just take a minute while you're thinking about it, just to put in a plug for the folks at racket and paddle. I, you know, someone asked me a while ago if I thought it was realistic that they would be able to bring in some major tournaments if we did this three-court expansion. And I think if you'd asked me that question a year ago, I'd have said, "I don't know." We'd see. But with this group, Kyle Markham, they're so well-connected that I, there's no question in my mind that if we build it, that they'll fill it. I mean, they're, it's a, we're lucky to have them. They're doing a fabulous job.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. I think the only people that we haven't yet talked to is emergency management. There's a couple of requests.
Yes, and I, never mind. I think you did talk about some of the rest of the facilities once.
Dusty Nichols, emergency management. Just to kind of explain, I can talk about the radio siren stuff. The other stuff's pretty technical. I do have Nelson here to talk about those other, the radio refresh, those kinds of things. But as far as the EOC siren, radio siren and encryption, I'm not here to sound an alarm by any means. We're encrypted, we're good. We need to increase that encryption. Probably, I'd like to do it this year, obviously, that's why it's on the list, but we're gonna be looking at this probably continually. Those bad actors and their tenacity to cause problems are out there, so we're trying to keep ahead of that with the encryption, and that's what that's there for. It's all 71 sirens that would touch that, and that is state, what do you call it, contract.
Your radio refresh, and I know that Nelson's here, that's part of the annualized part that we do?
Yeah, I'm gonna let him talk, because I'll say it wrong. I know I will.
Yes, that's correct. We, that's an annual thing we do to get most of the radios that we have either inherited from other departments or that have come to, into life. We've got quite a few of those still yet to get traded out.
What's the need for your back hall switches?
Okay, those are in coordination with the sheriff's office. Right now, we need, we will need, because of the technology, those back hall switches were put in when the system was put in '13, '14. As they, as with all the technologies that we see, especially the technologies that have 24/7 usage and 365 days a year, we need to get those replaced after a decade of them just being there working. That's what, what puts the integrity into our radio system, and that radio system, it concerns me when we have issues on that, especially as the ambulance compliance officer for EMS, if we can't do communicated or anything like that. But everybody that uses it would benefit. Everybody carrying a radio, Shawnee County radio would pretty much benefit from it. And then, on the lower one, I don't know, let's see if I can find it here, the 216 down there, whatever that, however that works, there it is. The tactical vehicle one for $55,000, we can move that out a couple of years. We just put it on there because they're, as, as I've told you, with all the technology that we get, the minute, the minute, the minutes you buy it, the, it's apparently obsolete, so...
Well, in this case, we inherited it.
Yes. It's getting good usage. We've used it on a regular basis, and we foresee using it probably several more times by now in December.
Any questions for Dusty or Nelson? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there any item that we haven't touched on that the Commissioners would like to speak about? And again, we generally have $2 million that's set aside for capital outlay, new debt?
Correct. Yes, we have nothing scheduled really at this point for new debt for 2025, but I did include in the 2025 budget request for the general fund to transfer $2 million into this fund. There was also a request to transfer money into the roofs and parking lots fund, and I'm not sure if Kurt, that would be another potential increase to this if we thought that we could reduce the amount going into roofs and parking lots. That's a, that's a fund that Nelda and Kurt and I can talk about to see if there would be some appetite for reducing that transfer amount and increasing the amount of capital outlay. We can meet before, we meet on Monday and see if there's any appetite for that.
How much is in there now?
Currently, oh, gosh. I'm not certain, but I can find that information for you. But there's, it currently has a balance. I don't believe we have any, we have one project, yes, we have one project scheduled for this year, so the remainder of that balance would still be available for 2025. And I know we were looking at potentially having some 2025 projects, including the courthouse, but our annual transfer in, I believe, is set at $750,000 each year, so... That is also included in my budget, so that, that would be a discussion we could have to see if we could look at reducing that amount and increasing the capital outlay amount of the transfers, if that is helpful at all.
Gentlemen, do you wanna make decisions today, or do you wanna think about this for a little bit?
I'd like to think about it just a little bit myself.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I think there's a couple of them that are, kind of, have to be done, you know, those high-priority ones at the, at the top. I think the DOC security system and the perimeter door replacement, I think those are pretty important things. And then the miscellaneous small capital outlay projects, something that I think we need to do every year. So, I mean, I think I would be comfortable approving those today. I mean, I'm, I'm fine if we start kind of whittling away at some of this stuff, but if you wanna hold off, that's fine, too.
We can whittle. That'd be all right.
So, I mean, I would, I would make a motion that we at least approve those three items to begin with.
So, numbers, lines, those would be lines five, six, and seven?
Yeah.
Motion made by Commissioner Mays, second by Commissioner Ripon. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. That passes three to zero.
JPL HVAC replacement, that seems really high.
You mean the cost?
Yes.
Well, our cost to replace the air conditioning unit at Heritage was, I mean, we just did that this year.
But that also included the windows and stuff, too, but it was like 300 and... She said.
I don't know how many square feet.
She did say it could be 350.
It says it could be 350.
But that wouldn't.
Depending on how much they could reuse of the existing system.
Yes, that'd be fixing it instead of replacing it, but with the parts are hard to find.
And it's broken down a number of times this summer.
We actually had an event last week where she had to have staff offsite because that section of the building we didn't have before, and they had no air conditioning.
How many square feet is that? Do you have any rough idea? This estimate, is this, you just have one estimate on this?
Yes, I had an engineer, a mechanical engineer, take a look at it to see what our options were because the issues we continue to have with this system. And that's when I found out the system basically is obsolete. It is not a recommended or used system any longer.
A question for Kellen, actually. Kellen on the sport court. Couple of comments and questions.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a little worried about the fact that we're not buying new basketball goals and volleyball nets to go along with it. And I don't know that, like, what's the plan? If we spend $400,000 and we still don't have what we need to actually use it, I mean, what's the plan there?
I think the biggest expense, right, that we are seeing from at least one of our volleyball promoters who took a tournament out of market, and we've gotten some firm commitments to bring back if we get the sport court, is the, is the trucking and freight cost on shipping the sport court itself. So, I do believe that that is one of the largest expenditures to producing that type of content in our space. That sport court surface that they have utilized in the past does come from out of state. Additionally, there's, there's some other ways we can do the volleyball netting and, and judging stanchion. The system that, that, that we quoted in the project was a self-supporting system, weighted system. There are more economical and cost-effective options to do that for volleyball specific. For basketball, there's really not a lot of cost-efficient ways to, to provide a number of basketball goals. You know, we are looking at about 52,000 square feet of sport court surface, which could encompass on campus along with our current basketball floor that we have produced in Landon Arena and putting the sport court in Exhibition Hall. That would allow us to get a wide range of number of court surfaces that we could use to produce that type of content. But I also want to draw attention to the fact that the sport court is not just utilized for volleyball and basketball. It can be multipurpose, utilized for things like cheer and dance, things like pickleball, other sporting activities. In fact, we've got a number of support commitments from groups and organizations in the marketplace. I tried to see if I could tell you exactly what we have required, but we have been confirmed for a national collegiate piece of athletic business for the 2025 and 2026 years. Hopefully, I'll be able to tell you more about that soon in a public manner. But we're also chasing some other national competition from collegiate activities with other, you know, collegiate activity associations for future bids for '26 through '29, '26 through '30. There's a lot of opportunity for the sport court to be utilized, not just specifically for volleyball and basketball, but to expose, you know, a few more opportunities for athletic competition, both youth, high school, and collegiate activities for that. So, obviously, it would be, the more infrastructure we have at the facility creates a better opportunity for us to contract that business in because those are pretty significant expenses to event producers and promoters to have to bring in for that event. But again, just kind of going back to what I talked about earlier, you know, the most important piece in our mind is the sport court and the renovation of our current court and the two new basketball goals.
Are projects like this eligible for like bed tax? I don't know.
You know, that's a good question. Mike Bell is here. I wasn't planning to punt him that question, but if he wants to answer that one.
I mean, this is, this is a project that would put heads on bed, or they say.
Good morning, commissioners. Mike Bell with the Topeka Area Sports Commission. Your question of whether or not bed tax could be utilized for this project at current, I'll answer it as far as I can. Shawnee County, I believe, collects bed tax in the amount of roughly $50,000 a year from the one hotel that does sit in the county. The rest are collected with city funds, and that would be a city determination. So, unfortunately, I, that's as far as I can answer it. I apologize.
Thank you.
But you are correct in that it will generate, it is going to generate business, not for our community.
I think one more piece while, while Mike is up here. The Topeka Area Sports Commission, a visit to Topeka collaboratively worked to comprise a data set of information through surveys and/or responding questions from youth, youth sports activities that take place both in the market and out of the market. Mike and his team have been able to develop a pretty good data set of how much of that youth sports spend is leaving the market and what that equates to on a per-person spend. You know, obviously, that, we're not gonna capture all of that, right? If we bring some of this infrastructure and project into the facility. But I do think we can capture a pretty, a pretty good chunk of that and/or capture some unrealized potential business that, that might not be a part of that data set. I don't know, Mike, if you want to jump into some of that stuff or if we have time to look at that.
I, again, Mike Bell with the Topeka Area Sports Commission. I will say that we have, we ran a study through the citizens of our, of our county. Had 1,256 responses for our survey. And basically, we're trying to find out information about them departing our community and the economic outflow for sports. What we did find is that basketball, volleyball, those court sports were some of the top five. Roughly, overall, we're losing a conservative estimate of about $10 million to leave our community for sports. That is everything from pickleball to skateboarding to you name it. But in these two court sports in particular, it is close to $2 million that leave annually just on a conservative estimate. We feel that, or I feel that we can capture at least, you know, a good percentage of that. And I have actually spoke with members of our community, members that are booking events outside of our community, that they just say if we had, if we had some courts, if we could just have it all in one space. We have some great community assets. They're just not in one space that can really run a sports tourism, sports terminal. So, I think that, that answers.
Mike, can I ask you to come back just?
Yes.
Where does Washburn University factor into that discussion? I mean, Washburn has Lee Arena, they've got the Whiting Facility. And I don't recall seeing a lot of sports tournaments being requested for, at Washburn University. Are they just happening and I'm not on my radar?
I can give one good example of that would be the volleyball tournament that Kellen was speaking about. We actually, they utilize all those spaces. They need actually 25 court services in a community to put on their tournament. It's, it's that big. It's grown that, that large. And we have utilized Washburn in the past. The problem that our tournament producers run into is, quite frankly, a personnel issue. It's a lot easier to run a tournament in one location with several courts than to run in multiple locations with multiple areas of opportunity. You can cut down on having the runners, having, you know, having people tabulate scores. Just the general infrastructure of a tournament is better on the sports tourism side if it is in one built, one location that this is what could be represented at the Exhibition Hall and Landon Arena. That's not to say Washburn could not benefit from this. They could also be an amenity that we could tack on. If we do it right, we could start to host large-scale tournaments with play-ins at Washburn University or any other infrastructure in the community. So, play-in games are out there, large basketball tournaments are out there. But having a definite kind of core site is pivotal for these folks that are putting on these tournaments.
His visit to Topeka approached Washburn about them purchasing sport court facilities for their training facility?
We have, we work in tandem with Washburn University quite a bit on how to utilize our spaces. That discussion specifically about, about their facilities and sport court on the facilities, I haven't broached that subject. What I looked at was an opportunity for the event center, Landon Arena and Exhibition Hall, to be utilized to its fullest potential. We do have several days that that space does sit empty. It's still conditioned, you know, it's still, we've got still people there. So, why not try to find an opportunity to put some, something that could be useful, sport court, that we could put down? We could have youth activities. I've been speaking to folks that have youth academies, bringing in even international students, that we could have a space. We could have AAU tournaments. And these typically happen in those summer months when the event center is not as, as busy as it is during those winter months. So, looking at kind of an underutilized facility.
Other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Is there other items you want to take up today, or do you want to think about some of this for a bit?
Real quickly, I did get a number back for our Heritage Hall HVAC. It was about 128,000 to 129,000 for that project.
All right, well, let's move on then. We'll come back to the capital outlay.
That is, we have out years of capital outlay. I'm assuming you guys do not want to talk about that today.
Well, why don't you just go ahead and walk us through it again, just?
So, these are the requests that were made for the years 2026 through 2029. So, looming in the future, we have approximately $16 million in other projects that are being requested to be funded out of the capital outlay fund over the next four years. We also have a couple of projects that are slated in 2027 and 2028. And they are large, larger than the rest of these projects, and they are listed as being potentially funded with future debt. We have no commitment for future debt at this point. But that is where these four projects are currently listed as potentially being funded because they are so sizable. That includes an adult residential center for the community corrections, a DOC renovation, and, I'm sorry, there's only three, and a family park facility Phase Two. Those are, like I said, in 2027 and 2028, those are the only items that are currently listed as potentially having new debt associated with them.
And again, $12 million for, I'm sorry. You, you went too far.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. An adult residential facility, and that's part of the community corrections?
Correct.
Do you guys want to speak on that? I mean, you're here.
Brian Cole, Shawnee County Department of Corrections, and also have Major Steve Willis with the Community Corrections. One of the things that we have looked in for a couple of years is studying and researching what other communities are doing to break the cycles of recidivism, break the cycles of reducing prison sentences, not being lenient on crime, but finding alternatives to expensive detention. One of the things that we have looked very closely at and have researched with was one of the areas of a residential center for our high-risk people that are on community corrections. This gives them a little bit of a transitional housing and a, and make sure I say this correctly, Steve. Transitional housing, very structured programming and mental health treatment, drug and alcohol treatment that allows them to do it all under one roof from incarceration. And while they're out on the streets, when they're outside the jail or outside of prison, they can do this. We're starting to see a tremendous amount of success in other communities where they're reducing jail sentences, because this is less expensive than incarceration. We're seeing caseloads go down in community corrections. And we're also seeing the burden that are put on prison, that there's another alternative to low-level offense. Again, I'm not here to advocate that people don't need to go to prison or there shouldn't be punishment. What I'm trying to advocate for is that we're seeing evidence-based programming in other communities that are making these investments, in Cedric County, Johnson County, that are making these investments that are helping them with the transition from incarceration back into the community. And it's becoming, it's saving taxpayer money, it's reducing crime, it's a public safety issue. And we're seeing very good results. We know this is an expensive endeavor, and that's why we know we're working on a, a program right now. But we're always looking ahead, what we can do to save taxpayer money, to put it towards other programming in the community. And, you know, I'll let Steve talk if, so, you know. But this is something that we've allowed, that we, we think we can still push off and do because we have other issues going on. But that is a, a program that we're starting to see that is becoming very successful in other communities.
Okay. Questions? Thank you, Steve. Steve, you want to talk?
Steve Willis, Community Corrections. The only thing that I would add in terms of why this is an important position for Shawnee County, the adult residential centers that are across the state that are being utilized are limited to those communities. Many times in community corrections, we share resources. We are allowed to transfer cases back and forth where we can work with, with somebody who might be from, you know, Western Kansas, but they are living here or seeking treatment here. Those residential centers are designed to be utilized only for those counties. So, as good as they are, they're limited. So, having the ability to have something like that in Shawnee County for, we are one of the, I think we're one of the fourth-largest community corrections agency across the state. And, and we do not have access to that structured environment that some of the others do. So, that's one of the big reasons it would be a benefit to have. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else about capital outlay?
The road, Parks and Rec, West Edge Road. Should that be a Parks and Rec project, or is that a Public Works project?
Yes, historically, West Edge Road has fallen under the responsibility of Parks and Rec creation. It is something that we've talked about just informally between Parks and Rec and Public Works and myself, just about whether or not that... just about whether or not that logically makes sense, or whether that should be something that we should shift over to Public Works. This is an out-year project. I think that is something that I would like to have more discussions over, over the next year or so, with both departments and yourselves, and see where that really falls for Shawnee County and where it makes the most sense. But historically, yeah, it's a Parks and Rec responsibility.
Well, we did move a lot of parking lots and stuff over.
Yeah.
Public Works, for them to manage anyway.
I don't think, I don't think any of the Parks and Recs did. Just, it was everybody except for Parks and Rec.
Okay. All right.
Yes, they have been maintaining their facilities out of their building maintenance and 3R funding.
I'll ask a question with regards to this item. It says mill and overlay, but would a chip seal work on that?
Tim, we're at Parks Recreation. This is a great example of why maybe this should fall under Public Works. Have I talked about Kurt Nehaus and what a gym and what a, just how great he is for the county? Honestly, I imagine that it might. I mean, I think that's something we could look into. We just went with what we had done on East Edge Road prior, and we're going to carry that through, but we can look into it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kurt, did you want to defend yourself?
Regardless of where the money comes from, we would be glad to assist Parks and Rec in administering a project like that, so.
Well, all right.
We do have scheduled to discuss Capital Outlay again at the Monday Work Session on the 12th, I believe, is Monday. Of course, since that's not a commission meeting, no action would be taken. It would just be discussion. But then we would carry those, anything over to the meeting that we have on August 15th as far as any discussion and what actions we would have to, or we would be wanting to officially take on the 15th.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to all the department heads for coming here today. Because I can't answer any of those questions.
Madam Clerk, our next item.
Item five, public comment.
This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the Commission.
Well, good morning. Chair and governing body, Juliette Abdell, here on behalf of the Greater Topeka Chamber of Commerce Political Action Committee, which is loosely affiliated with the chamber. I just wanted to reiterate, in July, the board had voted for support of three candidates for county and state office, primarily for the primaries that just took place on Tuesday. Of those three, two were County Commissioner Kevin Cook and County Commissioner Erin Mays. And I just wanted to congratulate you both on your pulling through the votes for Tuesday and of course reelection of Commissioner Mays and Commissioner Cook moving forward to the general election. So congratulations to both of you. We look forward to continuing to work with you and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other public comment this morning? Our next item.
Item six, Administrative Communications.
This is an opportunity for any department head or member of the county to be addressed to the Board.
Good morning. Commissioners Teresa Fisher, Director of the Health Department. I just wanted to announce to you, as well as the public, on behalf of Livewell Shawnee County, specifically the Healthy Babies Work Group, in connection with the Shawnee County Health Department, the Kids Network of Kansas, they will be hosting their annual Community Baby Shower for Safe Sleep. Participants can register either on the Facebook page, or they can also call the number listed there at 251-5647. In addition to receiving safe sleep education, they will also be connected to community resources. There's a variety of giveaways as they are applying, and as long as supplies last. So, including portable cribs and wearable blankets. So we hope to see lots of our expectant parents and their families out at this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Howell, Shawnee County Election Commissioner. Just a reminder, August the 19th is the county canvas at 9:00 AM at the Shawnee County Election Office. We hope to see you there and hope to finalize all of the details of the August primary election.
All right.
Thank you.
Brian Cole, Shawnee County Department of Corrections. We are set for our official groundbreaking Wednesday, October, or October, August 14th at 10:30. That we have made final arrangements, other than just some small, you know, basically, you know, how many chairs and things like that. We've had a great response from our congressional delegation. People as far as Washington DC will be there. Our local Shawnee County delegation commissioners, people from the city of Topeka, Visit Topeka, Greater Topeka Partnership. All of this is just a, if there is an example of teamwork, this is what it is. And so we're excited to finally get this off and going in our back parking lot. And we'll start at 10:30. I don't expect this to last more than an hour. You better not. It's supposed to be, because I, we have other meetings to attend, but this is very important for us, and including the Governor will be there as well. So I just wanted to say, mention that we're ready.
Thank you. Any other administrative communications? Commissioner Rippon?
I don't have anything to add.
Commissioner Mays?
Nothing for me.
Don't either? So our next item.
Executive Sessions.
There is a need for an executive session today. This would be for matters relating to employee or employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with a representative or representatives of the body or agency. And this is specifically as to the Teamster negotiations. And this will be for a period not to exceed 30 minutes. And we'll start at, let's say, 11:15. That's a motion made. No action is anticipated. Motion made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Mays. All in favor say aye, all opposed. Passes three to zero. We'll start executive session at 11:15.
We are back from executive session. No action was taken. We are adjourned.